Well, yeah.
Did he ask Kathy too?
Thanks for coming.
You're the best.
I know you had family issues, but...
Yeah, it was my favorite.
It's great. Tough time of year.
I thought it was the latest one.
I'm sure it's the latest. Need to catch your breath or you're good?
No, I was...
Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order. First item on the agenda is the public input period. If there's anyone wishes to address council this time, please come forward. You'll have time, I think I'll give you time during the committee of the whole. Right? Seeing none, motion to adopt the agenda, move by. Thatcher seconded by Wallace, discussion on the agenda, seeing none, all in favor? Hope most carry. Motion to recess to committee of the whole, move by. Wallace seconded by Lumi, discussion, all in favor? Most carry. We are in committee of the whole. So, what is the committee of the whole agenda? I don't think we have a committee of the whole agenda, do we?
No, we're just going to discuss the issue that's on the agenda.
So I, yes, thank you. So I think perhaps we would let staff have a brief discussion and then we will have a discussion as well. Is that fair?
Sure.
Okay.
In brief, we've had a public hearing last fall, late fall, on Cook Avenue. Sites and issues were raised, resulting. We followed that up with a committee of the whole meeting in January. Again, we revisited some of the things raised at the public hearing and also fielded a few other questions from council. We then went back to the proponent with some of the issues raised. We've had some back and forth since and we've come to some general agreements on most everything that's been raised in the COW as well as public hearing on how that proposal will address those issues raised. One second point from planning that is a concern is the traffic impact on the surrounding neighborhood, particularly on Thompson and the day of Cook. And we were looking for a proposal that would include a mitigation of impact and a traffic calming approach. The proponents come across to another proposal which we feel doesn't fully address the OCP considerations and from a planning point of view doesn't stitch it up well enough. So we've recommended against the density based on primarily on the traffic circulation, the impact that would have on the surrounding. So normally driving volumes up on site should look for all stuff that's all looking for to optimize the outcome of the development of the zoning facility.
Okay, so what I'd just like to do is open it up to questions to Mr. Mitrano. And I'll start, I guess, or somebody else wish I'll start to get the ball rolling. The meeting that get-together you had on last Friday, you addressed, you along with the proponent addressed many of the issues and I see that most of the issues have been resolved. Certainly the density cap, things like that have been resolved. The only issue I see from a planning perspective, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Mitrano, is that the accesses off of Cook and I guess Thompson don't meet well or don't fit well with the OCP. Is that correct?
Um, Lord, more...
Please, yeah.
If I could add to that, we're not looking at layout right now, we're looking at the zoning. So we're looking at potential impact on the surrounding neighborhood and we feel restricting an access to one block, two points, would do the job of meeting some of the policies in the OCP and meeting best planning practice for the site's overall layout at the development stage. And so we're really looking for a proposal that handles that. So to your issue, yes, we would prefer to see access off of just two areas on Cook and not on Meadah, on or off Meadah or Thompson.
Okay. Me at all. Glad. Any questions?
Well, see, I'm looking at this new proposal here and I know two exits onto Cook, wouldn't that be, you know, that many units, wouldn't that create more of a problem? To me, I think two exits coming out in and through, say, ten vehicles movement, that would create more of a problem than there would be, you know, look at all two driveways on Thompson and five exits onto Cook. But ju- just the two exits, I, to me would, would, does that create more of a, to me it creates more of a problem, but I'd like an explanation why five and two is better than two on one. Like, two exits, two exits on the Cook alone, to me creates more of a bottleneck than it would disperse the way this layout is.
Out of your points, normally we're looking at the number of points within a block that are allowing access in and out. And so that's, the busier the block becomes is based on the number of points the block actually features for access in and out. The volumes that would be necessary to actually create a bottleneck or a jam, either going in or out of that would have to be much higher than what's being proposed in this proposal. So for twenty-eight units, you're not going to generate those types of volumes to actually nut up those two intersections. That would really take quite a bit more volume to do that. I mean, I respect the concern that you could have a car or two waiting to get in if they were simultaneously entering or exiting, but it's just not that significant of a volume to actually do that. If you spread that out, to your point on what's the advantage, when you're spreading that out, you're increasing the points that are potential conflict and in terms of operation and traffic circulation, you're increasing the number of things you have to work around when you're driving up volumes on the site. So from a planning perspective, the optimal result would be to limit those points to what we feel is appropriate and reduce the impact on the surrounding neighborhood.
So then the, if I could just speak to Tim's point, Councilor Thatcher's point, no, Tim's point, excuse me, hold on. Is that it's not so much the volume of traffic, it's the amount of access points onto Cook. It's more the problem than the volume.
For snow removal, is that one of the bigger problems that's foreseen?
Yeah, go ahead, Aaron.
The, I mean, of course, two in and out would be the ideal. But what we've talked about with the coming off of, the two driveways coming off of Cook, or the off of Thompson and then the four coming off of Cook. And with the easement that they're prepared to give us a snow easement, it's not, it's not a maintenance issue either way.
Yeah.
But this is about parking, really. As soon as we have a number of driveways coming out onto those streets, that encourages people to park on the road. That's kind of the assumption, that's part of the discussion that we've had. And we have that issue all over this community. So that's part of the reason that the planning department is promoting, avoiding that with any new developments. So, and I understand that and I certainly support it. A question I have is about storm drainage. And there is some discussion about it in here. If we had a number of driveways coming off that parcel onto the street, then that does have an impact on our storm drainage.
Yes, your worship through your Councilor Wallace. Part of the zoning bylaws requirements are that driveways have to feature some deterrents so we don't spill storm out. But still, yes, when we have a number of driveways, any driveway, we have to take into consideration the stormwater impact. And the subdivision servicing bylaw has a bunch of stipulation in there based on the surface runoff that would result from an increased number of driveways. And so hydrology would have to be taken into consideration at the development stage. Should there be more storm drain coming from higher number of driveways? You're right.
So then, sorry if I'm interrupting, but then if we carry on with that and we say all the driveways in the back, we still have the same amount of water. So we still have to get rid of that water, right? If there's in and out in the back, right, only, then water's still going to come off those routes. So then we still have to somehow work with that, right?
How the waters conveyed from the site to a storm drain in the street is obviously going to be dependent upon what's presented as a proposed layout.
Yeah.
But normally you have to have some onsite retention that's required in the bylaw as well as through building footprint, which is only allowed to be fifty percent. And the permeable surface retained is also fifty percent. So there's a bit of permeability onsite. Driveways tend to act as filters, for lack of a better term. And so when you compact it well enough and bring it down, as is anticipated, you're likely going to see a little more, quite a bit more coming out onto the street than you would if you eternally contained it and dispersed it much slower. You're still going to have to build the storm drain system in and around the site. That's a requirement of subdivision and service, development servicing bylaw.
Yeah, please.
So I'm not sure what you want to do here, your worship. But I am, I'm curious as to why the proponent doesn't like this concept of the entries being off Cook. I'm interested in the reasoning for it to be different.
Mr. Mitrano. Well, I'll have Mike speaking then. If Sazari, I'll give you a chance to speak because it is reasonable.
Your worship, that's, we're talking, the way we're talking about this in order is right. We're looking at a zoning proposal and we feel the most optimal is to have limited access from one block, one side of one block. The proponent has another idea and we've agreed to disagree. So that's strictly...
Well, if I could see, what Mr. Sazari explained to us is that because of the market, the way that it is, if we have two accesses of Cook, the whole development becomes strata. That's what he explained. But if he's going to speak, then he should.
Yeah, I should let him speak. Sazari, yeah? You can stay there if you want, it doesn't matter, wherever you want.
Yeah. So what I see, you see two pages, you see one page, you see the city proposal right here, yeah? So when you look on the city proposal, you basically, your backyard is facing on the street. Your front of the house, your driveway is facing inside the house. So when you open back door, your key's going straight to the street, number one. Number two, how you remove snow from here? If he can answer, where you put the snow here?
In the snow easement.
Where?
You're not granting an easement?
No, we have, we have inside, we have houses facing inside. You have to remove, only one place to remove the snow. You have to load it on the truck, you remove somewhere. There's no way to remove the snow here.
So you're saying that it's all right for the city to remove the snow?
No, but inside, it's, this is, you're selling affordable housing for the people and people has to pay for the truck and remove the snow. There's no way to remove the snow. There's no way, because you have only, only a little bit room here to push the snow and you have no room, all this, you have twenty-four units here and tw- at least twenty-four cars on this small place. So when you're driving, somebody has to buy. So it's no way, so, okay, so number two. Number three, we replace grass on the asphalt. So when we have the asphalt, kids playing on the asphalt. And look the opposite page, this is, this is my proposition. My proposition, we have two buildings with underground parking for baby boomers and people play, pay for remove the snow. So we split basically fifty-fifty. Fifty percent people don't pay for the snow remove, fifty percent pay for the snow remove. We have only this inside, that the road is inside. So all this, we have a lot of room to push the snow. We can push the snow left, right, back, whatever. Parking issue is not issue because when we have driveway like duplex, I'm building on the Cook school, you can see, it's two, everybody got two-car garage. So let's say they're using only one-car garage. Still, everybody got enough room on the front of the house to park the car. It's not the issue. So, and so basically, we have, from Cook School, we have four drive, because we have two fourplexes, from Thompson, we have one fourplex. And another twelve units is inside, fencing to the driveway. People pay for the snow removal, we have room for the snow removal. We have, we have room for the city dumping the snow or snow storage, whatever the city decides. You see, you see two opposite sides. So you see, you have only, when you plow the snow, you see on the, my proposition, when you plow the snow, basically you have four-meter driveway, you have empty space, four meter, eight meter, four meter, twelve meter, four meter, eight meter, four meter, and huge space, and it's not around. So basically, it's, it's small access. So basically, twelve units going to the access. So it's basically fifty-fifty to city proposition and my proposition.
Okay, thank you, Sazari. I'm gonna, yeah, I'm gonna just keep going here and if I need some input, I'll ask you, okay? Please?
Okay, thank you.
Under the proponent's proposal, half of the property would still be strata.
That's what we were just told.
So... I don't understand how that concern from the developer was relieved then.
Because I can answer, I can answer this question.
Sorry, but what I'm saying is, if, if the two driveways from Cook is problematic because it would enforce a strata ownership, then you still have half of this parcel in strata ownership. So I don't understand how that was a solution.
That's okay, we'll get back to you if we need more clarification because I need some more counselors to chime in here. And you're not ready to. Tim, your ask.
Well...
While you're...
The, 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 the snow issue along Thompson doesn't look like a big problem to me. And the parking, you know, I can see where the two-car garage, you know, and if there's visitors, there is room to park on in the driveway. It's, it's, I, I think this is a project that has to move forward in some direction and I hate, I hate to go against the OCP. But I think we have to make some type of, I don't know if you could make an amendment to the OCP or what, but I'd like to, I'd like, I'd like to see some development go on there. And it's a, it's a tricky issue between proponent and the city. With, with the OCP in place, you know, it's, our hands are almost cuffed at the moment, so...
Well, I think the, it's important to note that the OCP is a guiding document. It isn't the end, end-all and be-all. I mean, certainly, we take all those OCP issues into account when we move forward. And I think what we have to do is somehow establish some kind of balance between the OCP and what is affordable. Let's not forget that without the density, the, nothing will proceed there because it's not affordable. So the OCP speaks to various things, but it also speaks to the sustainability of the city of Roseland, if you want to stretch it that far. So, you know, we have to, we have to somehow come up with a balance. As to parking with, with all those driveways and visitors come and park on the street, I'm, I don't think that that will ever be solved and that happens everywhere. And I don't know that if there are, for example, along Cook, if you're looking at the proponent's proposal, if there's a wedding and a reception in the one duplex, that there's a bunch of people parking on the street, that's going to happen no matter what. So do we, I don't think that in this instance, we're encouraging residents to park on the street. And I think that's pretty much all we can really, really try to accomplish. Certainly, our, some of our small duplex infill things have proven a point that even if we make parking a part of the, of the design, it doesn't necessarily mean that people are going to do that. So we can't really control that, but what we can control is that there is the ability to park off the street. And I think both of these proposals address that. Mr. Mitrano.
Your worship through the Councilor Thatcher's comments, it wouldn't require an OCPM. You're not, your hands are not tied by the OCP. There's some policies in there that we, and I try to emphasize when we come into a zoning proposal, that should be addressed. That doesn't necessarily mean that they're hard tied by the OCP. We look to meet all the policies in the OCP, that's what planners do. They steer by that document so that we produce a recommendation for council or an analysis that highlights things that we feel are important based on the OCP policies. So just not tie in your hands at all.
And certainly on, sorry, yeah, sorry, thank you. And certainly in this issue, we, the first go-around, we had public input period and we heard from the public. And perhaps not all, but some has certainly been addressed in the revision. Is that, that's correct, isn't it? Not everything, I agree with that. But there is, most of the issues, some of the issues have been resolved. But it may be council's, this recommendation in this committee meeting that we proceed the first and second reading and that we go to the public. And at that time, we can see if this is acceptable. And that certainly, by going to the public, that certainly has council asking the public, and the public were the ones that did the OCP, asking the public what they think. And, you know, that may be the way we wish to go. We shouldn't forget, we shouldn't forget that we aren't talking, while we are talking about a specific layout, we may be talking about a specific layout. The zoning does not reflect that specific layout. So I, and please jump in if I, if I'm wrong. But if we say to, if we, council says, we're okay with the zoning bylaw, let's put it the first and second reading, right? And we put that bylaw in the hands of the planning department, right? And he has the authority now to approve the subdivision, he may, he may or may not approve this specific design. It would be up to him. What we're doing at this stage is we're looking at the specific design and we're bringing it to council, the specific design within this zoning, to say, okay, council, are you happy with this design? Because it's going to go, it's going to, we're going to approve the zoning and then this design is going to come forward. So does council approve of this design in principle, knowing full well that this may not be the design, knowing that we're only talking really about zoning? Is that, go ahead.
We try not to look at any drawings. So we really don't like drawings at zoning. We're looking at land and impact on surrounding lands and we're not looking at how it's going to be laid out. A layout comes at the subdivision stage or at the stratific stage when the proponent's coming in. So zoning's the first step. However, we do try to highlight to council and the public all the issues and how these issues could be addressed at the zoning stage. So you can imagine in your head a number of layouts on that site. But we try not to go there in our heads. We say, okay, what is optimal for this site's development? How can zoning handle it best as a first phase of approval from council? And after that, to, to the mayor's point, to your worship's point, we then feel the layout proposal. So you could go to public hearing and you could hear from the public.
So if going into zoning, we and the proponent were both happy with the design, it would be much cleaner, much more simple. However, if this council should just wish to proceed with the zoning, the density, the height, all that thing, all those things, then the proponent would come with the design then, would be a design that has to be approved by planning?
By approving officer.
By the approving officer, sorry.
Which I'm not, which, you look to your point, worship. Right now, I have to keep the planning hat on. There's a, it's important I do that.
Yeah, I know, I understand.
And approving officer is a different role. I normally don't present at a zoning application stage because then I'm mixing and matching and it's not fair to the proponent or council or the public. So right now, we're, yes, trying to keep our head off that piece of paper with those...
Right. So that, so the easy, maybe not easy, but maybe the council may wish to go first and second reading and public hearing and then hear from the public because perhaps if the proponent also hears from the public, there may be an alteration to this and we could do that at, after second reading.
Absolutely.
All right, sorry, Joanie, did you? I think she might have been...
I guess I should say something, hey?
Oh, I don't know.
I mean, I'm really, I don't know. I'm really, I feel caught up in the dynamic of what you're describing of, you know, there's the plan, which is not entirely under our control and it's not finalized, but yet that's being presented to us and yet we're actually just saying yes or no to the zoning change. And, you know, they really are two different things. And I have two quite different opinions about them. You know, I mean, I don't know. I, it, it does, it does make sense to me that we should give a fairly open zone to this area, you know, for someone to have. It just, it makes sense, the zoning that we're proposing here, that's being proposed. You know, as far as having two plans in front of us with different only in pretty small detail. I mean, you know, I look at these two plans and I think the driveway issue is probably the least of my concerns, really. I mean, I spent seven years of my childhood in, in a housing thing like this, you know, with four flexes around a parking structure very much or a parking lot of sorts, just very much like this, um, um, the city one. And, and there were a lot more units than what we're considering here. This, in the whole entire complex, there were many more units than even in just the ones around the, the parking lot part. Each individual one had more units than six. And, you know, so to me, I mean, this is, this isn't changed, this isn't different. This is, it's something I experienced, I grew up with, right? On the other hand, with the driveways, I mean, as far as opening up the, what is it, potential points of conflict or something? I mean, ultimately, people driving out, you know, that takes about five seconds to drive out of your driveway. And you're probably leaving the house maybe twice a day and, you know, returning twice a day, I guess. You know, once or twice a day, especially that close to downtown, not everyone's going to even be doing it that often. And so I don't feel like, it's not a deal breaker for me, right? So given that these are kind of the highlighted differences in these two plans and this is what we're working with really, it just, it, it's hard for me to be part of this discussion or have, make this decision when I feel like the really important parts aren't things that we can even deal with right now. And, you know, really important parts being what actually the structures are going to be and, you know, the, I don't know, how it fits into the market of Roseland, how it fits into the communities around there, how it fits into, you know, so many other things. So, you know, it's, I don't even know where to go with it. I'm okay with the zoning ultimately, I'm okay with going to the public ultimately and hearing again what they have to say. But I don't believe that anything new that's happened here is going to change what we've already heard them say. And I haven't heard a single positive word on the idea of having, you know, the massive four flexes there. I mean, like I said, on my hand, I do see a certain amount of value with it. It's not a big change for me because I grew up, so it's normal for me. But I, yeah, there's just so many things to deal with here and I feel like we're dealing with such a tiny little ghost behind the iceberg and it's almost useless to stop dealing with it. So anyway, take the discussion however you like, I guess, and I'll see what I can do.
So this will be a development permit approval that comes back to council during subdivision? Is that, is that right? Or are we done, once we're done the zoning, council's done with this?
Your worship through your Councilor Wallace. Once council passes a zone, it's up to the proponent to come back to staff and propose a development, whether it's a subdivision with what's allowed in that zone. So council does not get involved in the process of approval for subdivision or strata. There is a development permit requirement per form and character. for form and character for multiple family dwellings in Mossland and that is also processed administratively in our office. But no, council, you're right, council does not get involved. And to Counselor Bloom's point, zoning facilitates outcomes and we take a look at all the details. We really point in our details and traffic impacts are a big detail for us in today's world.
But to Counselor Bloom's point, forming character and neighborhood fit, you, you, and with your planning hat on, are comfortable with that zone?
The zoning, the zoning is definitely a change in the neighborhood character. We feel it's an incremental change that could be handled well in that neighborhood, on that lot with those densities. So, that's why you see a density cap for the number of what we call equivalent units as well as the number of dwelling units and the number of, the size that could occur in multi-plex, so we said six. And so, the massing in the neighborhood doesn't stretch it too far. You wouldn't see one building containing all the density on one side of one lot and another one like that on the other side. It should, it should be an incremental increase and not something that actually blows the neighborhood up in terms of a form and character difference. So, we feel like, yes, it's different and yes, it can be well managed based on what we've placed in that zone for, what the proponents agreed to place for caps on the densities and the housing forms. And that is such a change, but I think it's a manageable change. We're in support of that. I mean, the report certainly states that we support that. It was a change.
Well, nothing can happen here until it's rezoned. You know, we're delaying the proponent on his proposal. I think we're holding, we're holding development up for something that we don't know what's gonna happen yet. If we approve the zoning, then he can start doing his, all his proposals and getting built, development of the development department. And myself, I don't see any reason to, to not rezone this, this property. Property's been sitting idle for quite a few years now. I know some of the neighbors are, don't want anything there because they figure it's gonna destroy their view. But, you know, that's part of living in a city. We're gonna have to come to some decision and I don't, I don't wanna see that property sit idle for much longer. I think it has a great potential. And I think we can make something work in that area.
I think it's also important, when we speak of views, remember, most of the people that live on the Thompson side, I think have been there for quite some time, their view was Cook Avenue School, which is a lot higher than, than what this is. And on the Cook side, shading from the school itself was a lot more than this potential. So, I, I think that, you know, we have to be aware of that. Also, I think another point is if council moves to the second reading and the zoning and say the zoning is approved, it's not to say that the current proponent could or would be willing to comply with that zone, right? There's nothing to say that. But we would be zoning the property to CD six, which now may be marketable in the proponent as a CD six zone if should that proponent not wish to go ahead. Does that make sense? That once we do the zoning, the zoning will be in place for this and it may become a marketable commodity, more marketable than it is if you want for the current proponent. If the current proponent say was to, was to not wish to, I don't wanna use the word comply, but does not wish to alter his layout to suit or match the neighborhood needs, he would still have now a piece of property that's owned.
For residential.
For residential.
Yes. Each of the lots, zoning would be approved, would have then residential development potential on them. And we don't know what would take place after that.
That's right.
So, we don't look any farther than the stage we're in, which is the zoning stage. We're, again, putting our eyes away from subdivision layout or development proposal because we're dealing with this incrementally.
So, where we're at, and again, jump in, won't be afraid, where we're at right now is we are changing the zoning on this piece of property with limits, height limits, all that stuff in the bylaw, right?
And densities.
Pardon me? And densities, which is very important. So, that, that initially or specifically is what any development, any development has to meet, right? So, that's what we're setting here, right? I mean, it, it's great, as I said before, it's great to see what the, what the current proponent proposes. I think it's great because then, you know, the community will have something to look at should we go to first and second reading and public hearing. Here it is. And depending on what we hear, I know we'll hear some of the same and the people that don't want anything there, they want the dog park, I know we'll hear all that. However, we as a council have to be aware that we have to be proactive and this is a, you know, it's a big piece of property, it's in an important location. We have to make sure we do it right. So, what we, what we're doing right by giving first and second reading is proposing zoning density, all that character, all that stuff, posing density to the public and have the public say, "What do you think?"
Okay, I wanna step back a few steps. So, strata, the only thing that would trigger strata is snow removal. Is that right? Is shared snow removal?
Shared road infrastructure. All the infrastructure within the property lines would have to be managed by the strata. So, there's a number of other issues, obviously sewer, storm, water, all your undergrounds are strata managed. It's, you have to go to the Strata Property Act and actually parse through that. So, there's, inside that, those property boundaries, everything is managed internally. Darren's crews wouldn't go in to fix a lot within the strata, for example. The strata corps would have to take care of all that.
And that's, there are, just to say this.
Triggered by what? That's it?
Well, first of all, there are other properties in Roson that are strata that do exactly. So, this, if this was strata, there would be one access point or maybe two exit points to water and probably one to sewer. So, that access, to that access point, it would be the responsibility of the strata council to get to there. For example, the subdivision below Tim's house, they have a sewer pump. Correct me if I'm wrong. That strata sewer just pumped into the city main. If that pump breaks down, it's the responsibility of the strata, not the city. As well as snow removal, as well as all those things. So, I'm, muddy the water's pretty good, thanks.
You did, thank you. What I'm trying to get at is, I don't, I don't think that the proponent wants a strata. Can I ask that?
Sure.
Is the proponent looking for a strata development?
Fifty percent is strata, fifty percent is not strata.
But originally, that's not what, you weren't going after strata, you were going after fee simple? Isn't that true?
But we, we changed, we, this, this plan is more closer to the city. So, fifty percent is strata, fifty percent is not strata.
It's changed a bit.
Okay.
Yes, please.
The answer is yes. When he first brought the first layout, it was no strata.
Okay.
But there was the driveway going up Thompson.
Okay. I mean, I, I know that strata ownership can be quite problematic and I know that there's a lot of people that simply won't get involved in that. So, I mean, I think for, for the benefit of the community, the best thing is not to have strata development, personally. And I'm wondering if there's some way that we can come to a compromise that we can, like, I really do see the, see the thinking behind both the ISL traffic report and our planning department. I, I do agree with limiting the access onto that property. Is there some way that we can limit the access and also make a compromise that wouldn't trigger strata?
Well, that would, that would mean, that would mean if we don't trigger strata, that would mean that some way the city has to take responsibility in the, the proponent's new plan, that proposed laneway or whatever. Some way the city would have to take responsibility for that laneway. And that laneway certainly would have to meet city standards and I don't believe that any public works official would love to see a dead end laneway like that that have to remove snow. So, if we were talking about now that we don't wish it to be strata, then are we saying all access is going to the Thompson and Cook? And, you know, what are we saying? If, it's, there's, there's issues with snow, with, with snow removal, with all the maintenance. If the proposed laneway is now the responsibility of the city, I personally could not ever endorse that because it's not fair. Yeah, go ahead, man.
Your worship, in order to, I mean, to get into a development proposal, so if you're interested, set aside the zoning for a second. Somebody walks in and says, "I'd like to develop the land this way." And we say, "It's a city standard based on the subdivision development servicing by law." If they want the city to service it, that's what it's gotta meet. If they wanna make a variation to that bylaw because they can't fit a road within, then they have to come to council and request the variance. Staff would review that request and then provide a proposal to council while their variance is released. We've done that before, where we service a city, any area of the city, but we've actually varied the road, for example. So, it's happened. It can, you know, it can happen, but it's a matter of what the proponent proposes at the development phase. So, that's, in our minds, it's, we don't have that proposal sitting on our desk. We have proposals on our desk, which is, so it's possible.
So, to go back to the, to one of my original comments was the fact that what we're doing here would be to, to, if, it's up to council, but what we'll be doing here is rezoning the property. That's what we're doing right now. We're really not looking at this design. Once we resume, rezone, or if we were to rezone, however, any design would be approved by the approving officer. We, so if we say, yes, this looks, this design looks great, wonderful, but now we're still rezoning. So, what we tried to get to is a place where the proponent and the city can say, "This design looks good, we'll deal with it after zoning." But we also want to know what we're, what the proponent wishes under the new zone. Is that, I don't know if I'm making sense because it is a bit confusing of where we are and where we wanna get to.
We've covered in the zone, the density, primarily the housing forms, the massing. So, fifty percent lot coverage for the multis, forty percent for, so for the singles or duplexes. Those are standard zoning features that come out. So, council in any zone knows the property can cover so much of the land, there's certain permitting uses in the zone. That's in the zone that you're looking at right now. And those twelve meter height limits, fifty percent block coverage for the multis, forty percent for the singles and duplexes are all in there. That's telling you what an outcome, what kind of outcome could come out on that lot. The concern on traffic that's noted in the report can be addressed as well, but it takes the proponent's agreement. We don't write the proposal for the proponent. And so, to your worship's point, the layout, in our minds, remains a mystery until after the zone and we look to consider impacts and deal with that. And that's just, it's just one point, the one point we have to contribute.
If I could just add something about the traffic. I spoke to the ISL engineer to get clarification. He compared the two, right? So, the one is obviously better than the other, but he also said that it's not unusual to have five driveways off of that street. It is more concerning if you have five than two. So, then we got into some discussion on duplexes and apartment buildings and suites and stuff. I also, when we met with the proponent, suggested that if council did decide to give first, second reading, that the proponent might want to hire his own traffic school engineer to, certainly perhaps another opinion.
And again, I guess if I'm beating the point up, perhaps I am, what we're trying to do at this stage, what we would ultimately be trying to do is have a proposal that, that we know that's, that will come to, to the approving officer, that we've already vetted through all our discussions. However, that's not necessarily what has to happen. Certainly what, I, certainly what could happen is first and second reading go over to public and perhaps the proponent or any proponent, and I stress that, any proponent, might hear what the public has to say and adjust their design, or any design, to answer some of the public's questions. So, I, whoa, he said that that's right. Thank you.
It says that was absolutely right.
So, well, to me, it's pretty easy. Is there any more, I mean, the options and alternatives is council does not, council refers it back and then council advances by providing first and second reading. So, if anyone's, if we've had enough discussion or more discussion is.
I have two more questions.
And it's, please.
Oh, right then. So, why is it being suggested that four clusters of autumn blaze maple be the ones that are placed in the Cliff, the Cliff Street allowance?
Because they're beautiful, they grow on Columbia Avenue, they're hardy, they're drought resistant, they don't shed stuff.
And do we have like twelve extras sitting in the public works yard?
No, we're gonna, we're gonna see twelve go missing on Columbia.
I wanted to see Norwegian maple and then I'll show you this later, how about any?
No, it's, it's such a strong performing tree and it actually does provide a lot of color in the fall and the Nisco real just see it, they're beautiful. And they're just real good performers. So, we, we reached an agreement with the proponent that this would be an easy tree to procure from either the Okanagan or one of the areas where there's a lot of nursery. So, they're easy, they're well, they're well regarded. If you Google them, you see they're made Tree of the Year a few years ago in North America. It's a real good performer and disease resistant. So, they should do well and we have proof on Columbia. They're, they're also used up at Red Mountain. Those are, those are the types of maple.
Do we actually have Tree of the Year award? I can't believe that.
They do it in our first world. They do, they provide Tree of the Year for urban performers.
Oh, Tree of the Year.
But I stick my head into sometimes when I look at it. Sorry. I gotta give a bang for the buck.
Anyway, Counselor Wall says another question.
I, I don't know, it just occurred to me that we would, you know, it would be nice to see more diversity of species is all that occurred to me, rather than having, you know, twenty years from now, our town's covered in these maples. I don't.
Fair, fair enough. And there are other trees that could perform well up here. It's just that you need, you really need climate zones and the soils are often not high quality and maples perform extremely well on poor quality soils. And so, there's some certainty they won't die.
I think you'll see, if I could just speak to maple trees, I think you'll, if you go to Tadak, the soil there was ugly in the, in the tens and twenties, right? The Tadak was formed and that's what they planted was maple because of that fact that maple grow in, not, or not optimum soils.
Terrible soils.
How's that?
Yeah, it's perfect. They grow in terrible soils very well.
Anyway.
Okay, one more question?
Sure. Is it a oak tree?
Nope.
Good.
So, in, in the agreement letter here, the proponent is agreeing regarding this less than fifty square meter dwelling, but it's not clear to me what the agreement is.
Well, we raised the issue of smaller space, smaller floor spaces for housing as one, as affordability. And it's basically, he's spoken to us and said, "Look, that doesn't really cost out for me. I, I don't see the sense in that to include a smaller unit on either of the lots." So, that, to that point, he's.
Not agreed.
Not agreed.
Not agreed to including a smaller, a smaller floor grade unit.
And that's, that's another thing too, that, you know, once the zoning is approved and all of a sudden it becomes, or whoever owns the property, all of a sudden sees that there's a market for, for that type of housing, comes for an abend, you know, I, right?
I guess, I guess that's my final question, if I can have one more.
You, you can have one, you want.
So, once the zoning is on the land, how many single family homes, un, single, unattached? Single detached? How many would be allowed on the parcel, on the whole, full parcel?
Because there's an equivalent unit of ten for each parcel, there could be ten single family homes.
Okay.
Each sitting on two hundred and seventy-five square meter or three thousand square foot lots. Equivalent units equal to one single family home. Or a du, like a duplex is two equivalent units. So, those are the two that go one to one. So, you could in theory witness ten single families on each of the large lots.
Twenty in total?
Twenty in total.
Ten on both sides.
Twenty in total, ten on both sides.
Is that mirrored across the street with existing?
I bet it's close.
No, no, it's not. There's a variation of three to six homes on the strata.
Yeah, Thompsons are bigger.
On the spans, on three hundred foot spans, there's anywhere from three to six if you look at it. The surrounding block spans around this site.
But some of those sit on more than one lot?
Yes. Well, we're talking the old thirty-five hundred lots. Again, we don't have a lot layout there. We have two large lots. So how that lot layout will play out is anyone's guess. You could be very creative with single-family development and not, you don't need a shoebox 30 by 100 lot. You go 50 by 60, series 50 by 60s. You can shape your lots creatively and still achieve very nice and effective housing for single families.
And, sorry, Mike, and in the zoning, that density is addressed. The density would be addressed in the zoning, that density.
That density is already addressed. He's, he's proposed 10 equivalent units on either lot. And we've, that could translate into 10 single families because a single family is one equivalent unit.
And it's important to note too, when you say that though, if any numbers become of 10 single-family lots, access would be an issue, subdivision would be an issue, access would be a huge issue. Layout would be a huge issue. So all of that would have to be done at the, like a subdivision stage?
At subdivision. Your worship, you could see a proponent come in, again, we're not looking at the owner, the owner either. I mean, no problems. We look at the land and what could, what could the outcome on that land be through the zoning? You could, each of them could have five duplexes on 550 square meter lots. That's what's in the zone. So we could see five duplexes appear on either of those large lots, five times. Each of those duplex units is one equivalent unit. So you could have 10 in 10 on either of the lots configured as proposed, should it, you know, should it be acceptable to, you know, city operations and other issues that we see in that layout. But we've not seen that yet. We're not at that stage yet. Or you could see a complete mix of singles, duplexes, and three-plexes, six-plexes appear on either of those lots to achieve that 10 unit equivalent unit density cap.
And every one of those layouts would trigger additional things that would have to be met in the subdivision and servicing by law, which could be onerous to that kind of layout. It could be.
We haven't seen that.
No, no. But.
We're anticipating a mix. That's usually, that's why that zone features that. It's a zone that's very flexible to allow changes in market and market demand so the proponent can achieve some type of feasibility for development on the block. So the zone gives a really good menu, and it's got, relax setbacks and two meter height, a little higher than for the multis.
So the zone may make the property marketable?
It should, it's very flexible.
Very flexible. Why you have the better word?
My, my question is on the parcel size, okay? A multifamily dwelling, maximum parcel area is 2,400 square meters. And that's, that's just the one lot, or is that?
The maximum parcel area, yes.
And so, and then the maximum 40%, 60% is covered. So a 1,400 square feet could cover that, a 1,400 square meters could cover that, that parcel, approximately.
It's a 50% building parcel coverage, and there's a 10% allowance for surface parcel coverage to allow for hard infrastructure or hard servicing that usually needs to occur on the landscape. So we, we do say up to 50% for the building, and then another 10 could be thrown in for service.
Okay, so continuing on with that, say 1,200 square meters, would that be equivalent to a six-plex, an eight-plex?
What? Depends what the proponent.
And that, and that's where I'm getting at. So say all of a sudden the proponent decided to sell that property, that 1,200 square meters could be changed into a 12-plex or a 10-plex or?
Maximum of six.
Okay, okay, that's what, so what I wanted.
We limited the maximum to a six-plex.
So it says, all it says here is multifamily dwelling, so if it were, you know, that's where I was getting multifamily is multifamily six or, or larger. That's where, okay, okay.
However, I mean, the maximum size on the multi is 2,400, as you see. And so in theory, yes, you may see, you know, you could see a six-plex develop that, takes advantage of that maximum. I would be rather, you know.
Rather what?
Rather, well, be a large lot with a large building. And then you would have a building that could achieve, say, 1,200 square meters on a 2,400 square meter lot. And with 12 meter height, that could be a large six-plex as possible, 12 meters long. That's a potential outcome in the zone.
Yeah, so I was leaning on just as over the button.
Yeah, but you're onto it. You're onto it 100%.
And I think that's where our focus should be.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is a, this is a massing issue. So that's, you know, there's no buildings in the neighborhood that big. That's bigger than a normal building. But it's a six-plex and possible for the multis.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Single families, you'll see there's minimum and maximum sizes for the lots. And that's something council may wish to consider as they, as they treat this.
The other thing, little two, and correct me if I'm wrong. If, if one large building is a six-plex, then on that same side of the street, you're going to be limited to, to single families, or, because you're only allowed X amount, right, of units per side, right? If you have six in one building, right?
You're allowed to have up to 14 dwelling units on either lots. So depending on how large you make your six-plex and how you design the interior floor space, you could have six units of varying sizes. And if you shaped the lot correctly and handled the building design well, you should be able to easily fit another eight dwelling units.
And the rest of it.
Any mix on the rest of the lot. And so that's up to the proponents to come in and work with his architect, get those designs in that would actually allow him to maximize his yields, to get a maximum yield on the site. And we don't get into that right now.
No, yeah, no. But, but what we would be doing, well, we'd be asking the public, that would be very important. But it's important that we, that we council understand that, that, you know, that, that could happen under this proposed zone.
In, in fact, we're supporting that. We're, you know, we're saying that's a good thing. I mean, we tried to clarify in the report, we support that type of density. If we see 14 units appear on both those lots, we feel we've achieved a change, a good change. Housing variety has changed out a little bit, and that's a good thing. And we would hope to see the, the housing forms basically fit the lot in a way that 14 is a cheap one. So a lot of it depends on what types of buildings are proposed and parking, et cetera.
Jordi.
I'm in favor of us focusing on the zoning issue and voting on this and taking it to the next stage.
Thank you. So is there anything else we have to ask, before I ask for a recommendation? Because this is, okay, I would like a recommendation. Jordi just, why don't you make that recommendation? Jordi, that this proceed to first and second reading and public hearing. Is that what you were saying?
Yeah.
And you make that recommendation?
I make that recommendation.
Thank you. Secondor? Thatcher? Discussion, any further? No? Call the question, on the paper? Pose?
I think I have.
You want to record it?
Yep.
Carry it. Okay, motion that we reconvene the special meeting of August 20th. Move by. Counselor Thatcher standing by. Counselor Bloomie, discussion on reconvene. I don't think so. On favor? Pose, carry. First item on his business, notice of motion request, Counselor Spear has noticed the motion that council approved the reimbursement. You have it here. Is there a secondor to that motion? Yeah, you know where I'm at?
You need a mover.
There is a mover. It's a notice of motion. There is a mover, obviously.
Oh, great.
Yeah, but it's feeding, huh?
Okay.
This is a notice of motion.
I know it's a notice of motion, but person making the, that motion is not here.
It couldn't be here anyway because it would be a conflict.
Exactly, so can't make the motion.
Yeah, but it's a notice of motion, so it came in right now.
You're saying if she has a conflict of interest in this, she can't make this motion?
No, I didn't say that.
I am.
Well, then, okay, then so we'll see if we sustain the chair because I say she can.
That's strange.
I don't know how it's strange. How would you, how would you suggest and deal with it? Not deal with it? Because that's the only other option unless, unless one of us at this table makes this motion. Is that what you're suggesting? And if, perhaps that's the way, is if someone make the motion on behalf?
Your worship.
Yes.
I'll make the motion.
Moved by Counselor Bloomie, second and by. Counselor Thatcher, discussion. Counselor Bloomie first.
Okay, so right now, in this motion is, we're just dealing with this upcoming.
Yes.
Conference itself. And because of that, I mean, there are just so many other issues if we were going to actually adjust the policy. There's a lot more that I would have to say, and whether I'm in favor of it or not, I don't even know yet. But for the purposes of just this conference coming up, you know, there are so few of us that are going to that. I think we need representation there. And there, you know, we're obviously not spending a lot of money on the situation because there are so few people going. So the extra $100 a day, or $125 a day, or whatever it is that's going to end up being for a few days, it's, it's just not a big concern to me. And I think we should just do it for the sake of this conference to allow this counselor to be there this time. And we'll deal with the grand global issue another time.
Okay, I, I want to speak to this before I let anybody else speak to it. I think when this originally was put into the policy, the last council, there was very much debate and very many concerns. And I think that what we did is we, back then, we approved this policy that said five, five days, whatever. And I think the counselor is very aware of the policy because she was the one that brought it up. We brought it to our attention, and she's aware of it. I, I see this as not really fair to the counselors that are self-employed or to others that have to make sacrifices to attend conferences. I think that we have a policy that we have to follow. And if we wish to amend policy for one instance, then we should amend the entire policy. And I think the council should be of serious consideration to making an amendment for one specific event when there already is a policy in place. Counselor Wall.
Okay, um, I would like clarification on something. This, um, this cost of a replacement worker is what we're talking about. But does a teacher, when they're on leave for a political position, do they still take their, do they still receive their wage? Do they receive their wage and have to pay out the replacement worker with it? Or do they not receive their wage and also have to pay out? I want to know what, what the situation is.
I guess.
And they always take their wage and payout.
Is the wage enough to cover the payout?
I can't answer that question. I don't know what the rate is.
Well, I just, I look at this and I'm thinking it's kind of a double duty. Because in the, in this case, a teacher is still getting their wage. And I would think that the intention is that she uses that wage in order to pay for the worker. Because I, I agree with what the mayor said earlier. I mean, for most of us, if we make that choice to go to a conference, but it's a personal choice, it's not a mandatory attendance. And, you know, when we make that personal choice, then part of that is knowing what our lost wages are going to be or et cetera. And if, if that's something that is not palatable, then you don't do it.
Counselor Thatcher.
Replacement workers are costly. It is going to come out of, you know, she's going to have to pay from, from her wage. But then she is losing her wage to attend, you know, a public, you know, public seminar or UPMC. And I don't, I don't think, I don't think any of us here should actually lose, lose wages to attend something like this. It's, you know, it's an important event that more of us should be attending. But I know that, that, I know that price there, I couldn't afford to, I couldn't get anybody to work for me for that, that price. So, um, and I don't, I don't think we should be losing wages, our own personal wages, to attend something like this.
Well, I, I've been doing this for a while. And for a while, I was getting paid for a real job. And when I went to conferences, I had to take holidays. I mean, I wasn't, no one reimbursed me. And the, and the taking of holidays affected what I did with my family the rest of my life because I had to use holidays in order to go to this. So I don't, I seriously don't believe that that situation with having to take holidays is any different than having to use your wage to pay a replacement worker. I don't see there's any difference whatsoever. And I also see that those that are self-employed do not even have the option of that. And I think it's very important that we understand that many people that put their name forward and stood around for council and serve their community are self-employed. And I think that if we were now to make rules, policy, that said those unemployed, we would reimburse them for whatever they would have made. I think that we'd be getting into something unbelievable. And also, I think it's important to understand that there is an opportunity cost involved in, in being on council. And I'll, I'll just pick on me because I know me the best. But certainly, I had opportunities, even when I retired, to earn money in the private sector. And I, you know, the fact that I wanted to go to this conference or that I wanted to be on council affected my, my ability to earn. But that's a conscious decision I made. And I, I believe it's a conscious decision that anyone makes to, to enter into this grind that is public life. I feel for the fact that you may have to use your wage to pay a replacement worker. I feel for that. However, I, I don't really see it as, as something that the city of Roswell should be paying for. And that's where I'm at. Counselor Bloomie?
Um, okay, so around this issue, you know, I thought we wouldn't be discussing the whole issue today because I kind of glossed over it. I definitely agree that there is some inequalities with respect to how that could be set up based on the different types of careers of people sitting around this table at any given time. So, I mean, I guess, I recognize that inequality of the situation of some people will be reimbursed for things that other people couldn't be. And, and I'm one of the people who sit on the side of it costs me money, time, and opportunity when I go to these things. And, you know, but I don't see how we can make that more equal. And so I guess I was just at the point where it's, I don't see a solution. So some careers have, you know, different pros and cons than other careers. And I, I just kind of chalked it up as we can't make it equal, they're just different. I also made that motion and went into this discussion assuming that, um, this policy and in fact, this situation was that the person or any position, you know, they're, they're giving up a wage plus having to pay out. But if they're getting paid for what they're not working, and then it makes sense to me that if somebody's coming in to you, you pass it on to who's actually doing the work, right? I mean, that does make sense to me. I just, I thought that that person wasn't getting paid that day. And therefore, that it would be a cost to them, you know, a straight out from zero cost. So anyway, I'm changing my mind on this.
Yeah, and I think it's also important to recognize that this policy's been in place for quite a few years now, and Roswell should be aware of it.
Well, a question. How many days is this, are we actually looking at? Because Counselor Spearin attended the AKBLG this year. I'm not sure.
Three more days.
Two and a half.
Two and a half more days. Above and beyond the policy?
No. Policy.
Yeah, go ahead, please.
Policies are five.
Policies are five days.
Right.
And Counselor Spearin has had two and a half days. So she would be entitled to two and a half days.
Okay.
All right.
So she gets two and a half days at the UBCM. UBCM is, I mean, the actual business of the, of the conferences.
Two days.
Two days.
Wow.
I don't, I don't know. I, I'm at the point where I think there's a personal choice involved here. And so I'm not in support of this.
Okay, so I, yeah.
Well, you know, it already, she's already getting compensated about $200 a day already, right? Correct? So, yeah, that's, yeah. I'm, I'm against it myself now.
Okay, so I'm going to call the question because I think we can beat this up forever. All right? On the motion. On the motion that council approved the reimbursement, all in favor? Opposed? The motion is defeated.
Only twenty-five bucks more.
Do you all want to be recorded at the vote?
There's only four of us here. Okay, yes. Perhaps just put unanimous. Thank you. Is that all right with council? Will we put unanimous? Thank you. All right. Recommendation from staffer, decision request regarding ballot twenty-four fifty-seven, there is a recommendation, Ms. Anjunueu. Can you read the recommendation, right?
So, that means many of the board recommends to council to provide first and second reading of the rezoning application from the properties legally described above as parcel B, block two, plan NEP six-one-six township nine A. Property identifier zero-two-eight-eight-two-eight, zero-nine-seven, on Thompson Avenue. And parcel A, block two, plan NEP six-one-six township nine A. Parcel identifier zero-two-eight-eight-two-eight, zero-eight-nine, at one-five-four-one Cook Avenue. Both located at the former Cook Avenue school site to allow for CD six Cook Avenue mixed residential. And further, that council schedules a public hearing.
Thank you. Is there a mover to the recommendation? Moved by Thatcher, second by Bloomie. Any further discussion?
Can I say quickly?
Yes.
For consistency, and I will be voting against this. I do want to see development happen on this property, I, I really do. It's been a, a source lot in the community for years, and I do want to see that development happen. But given that we have so much land zone for development in this community, and given the number of developments that have stalled or are partial and et cetera, I'm, I'm, I'm not in support of continuing to rezone for density without it being in accordance with what the community has stated it wants to see. So, that's where my stance, I'm just, just for clarity.
Okay, further?
I just want to highlight that my, being the, you know, seconding this is by no means a foregone conclusionary situation. I'm just keen to get the public involved in the discussion, but I definitely want to continue the discussion.
Right, and I think that's an important part of moving to first and second.
No, I just think we have to move on. A public hearing would be a, a good start. Even though we've had one, you know, we've had lots of comments already, I think it's, it's time to move on.
Okay, I'm going to call the question. On the motion, on the recommendation, the motion on the recommendation, all in favor? Opposed? Motion's carried. Counselor Wallace is opposed. Yes, please.
Would you like to set the date for the public hearing?
Yeah, I thought it was a part of it. I think there's, is that, I think there's a legal timeframe, as long as that fits the legal timeframe. It does? So, we will set the public hearing, I'll do it by motion. Is there a mover to set the public hearing? What was the date?
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third.
September twenty-third, mover to that. Move Thatcher, second and Bloomie. Discussion on that date, or do you want to move it to Christmas? Okay, on that, all in favor? Opposed, motion's carried. Thank you very much, we're adjourned.
Don't you have to do the first reading and second reading just for formality?
No, we can do two, no, we can do two readings at, at once.
All right.
And we just did it. Yeah, it's all good, we're adjourned. Thank you very much, Darren, thanks, Mike, thanks Cynthia Anjunueu, see you. Thank you, Cynthia.
She's kind of clumsy.
Thank you.
Oh, you have to, you have to roll the N, right, Cynthia?
Yeah.
Have to roll a bit in.
I can't roll anything.
Just a bit of council agreement, and I just wanted to run something by before you. Just adjourning, you know. Thanks for coming out. Yeah, the blue robe took me on today.
Are you going to wait a minute? Because if you're going to wait a minute, I have to, excuse myself for a second. Maybe, yes. I still got smoking.
Yeah, smoking like a chimney.
Thanks, bye-bye now.
Yeah.
Nice.
Yeah, that's a, that's an interesting one.